Good evening and welcome to Athens City Council. It's Monday, March 15th, 2021. The time is 7:00 and we are in regular session tonight. And our first item of business is to establish a quorum. And we do have a quorum and with all but one member of council present. The next item of business is disposition of the minutes for the regular session of city council held on March 1st, 2021. And if I could have a motion for approval of those minutes? Okay, I see Peter Cotts is moving and do we have a second? Second by Chris Fall. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the minutes have been approved. We now have communications and do council members have communications tonight? And I have not received anything either, so we'll move on to reports and communications from other elected officials. Law Director Eliason?
No.
Okay. Auditor Hecht? Okay. And Mayor Patterson?
Thank you, President Nisley. I have several communications this evening, one of which was the notice of violation from EPW just as an update to council because this was brought up in the past. And what has been filed through the Acting Director of Engineering and Public Works was two responses to violations. And I will read the first violation because the second one is kind of redundant based on the first violation. And the violation, a description, an operator of record notification form has not been submitted to the Ohio EPA DSW for the city of Athens wastewater treatment plant sewer collection system or review of the DMRs indicate that the collection systems, system is currently overseen by a Class 1 certified operator. And the corrective action is the operator of record notification form has been submitted on February 17th, 2021 and identifies three professional operators with a class greater than the classification of the sewer collection system for the sewer collection system. As I had mentioned in the past, the issue was an individual who had a Class 1 license signing some of the reports and the corrective action is to have all of our Class 2 operators as the signees on those reports as well as getting the individual who is Class 1 licensed as a Class 2 operator or their Class 2 operator's license. So that that's the one update I wanted to give council. Any questions from council on that? If not, I will go on to my next one. Sorry, President Nisley, maybe that's not, that's not authorized. I don't know. The, another thing that came up at the last city council meeting was the question was raised as to what reservoirs were going to be inspected. The, I received this input from Sean Beasley, who is the water treatment plant operator. Hope Reserve is one, Highland Reserve is the other one. The Ridge's stand pipe will be inspected, University Estates Stand Pipe, Blackburn Stand Pipe and the water, the water treatment plant Clearwells, both the two Clearwells and the Settling Basin. All of those will be, are on the inspection list to be reviewed. Even though council passed in, in November of last year, the complete street ordinance, within that ordinance, it speaks to the city providing a report each year as to what we have accomplished when it comes to complete streets in the city. So I went ahead and had a report compiled to share with council tonight on the 2020 complete street summary. Total miles of bike lanes and trails built or striped was .34 miles. Linear feet of new pedestrian improvements, 1,648 linear feet. Number of ADA improvements, including curb ramps installed, was eight. The number of transit accessibility improvements built, there was one. Number of bicycle, pedestrian or multimodal facilities constructed, there were four. Number of crosswalks or intersection improvements, there were two. Percentage of transit stop accessibility via sidewalks and curb ramps, 85% is the percentage in the city. Number of crashes, injuries, fatalities, as provided by ODOT for specific intersections in 2020, ODOT database included reports of 50 total crashes occurring at intersections within the city of Athens. Of these crashes, 14 were injury crashes and two were fatalities, unfortunately. Number of bicycle parking improvements, zero. And the number of projects exempt by, exempted by this policy. And again, the number is zero. That is the report. I can make that information available to all of city council as well as get that up on the city's website. So I will do so. The final two items to share with council tonight is Athens County Recycling Day. This is a ways out, but it's always good to remind people it'll be Saturday, May 15th, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the county fairgrounds. Items that can be dropped off range from refrigerators, washing machines, stoves, dryers, things of that nature, car tires, car tires on rims, couches, hideaway beds, chairs that are stuffed and so on and so forth. We will make sure this gets posted on the city's website and I will continue to bring this up to council as we get closer to May 15th so that people can start preparing to get all of their unwanted items pulled together. And finally, for tonight, I want to share that on Thursday, April 1st is the virtual Take Back the Night here in Athens, uniting and fighting for victims of sexual and domestic violence. I will share with council and hopefully we'll get this on the website as well, some more of the details surrounding Take Back the Night. President Nisley, that's all I have for this evening.
Great, thanks. Good to have all these reports and updates. Appreciate it. We'll move on to ordinances for third reading. The first one is Ordinance 1921 and Ordinance Amending Ordinance 6320, Construction and Construction Engineering of the Stimson Avenue Improvements Project and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 01921.
Okay. And a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you. This is a matter of bookkeeping. This is to move the monies within the city from one fund to the fund, the Street Rehabilitation Fund, from which we are paying for the Stimson Avenue project. So this ordinance reduces one amount, removes amount from the ordinance and adds it to the, the total sum. So I'll just quickly read this here. The pertinent, section one, section three of Ordinance 6320 is hereby amended to read as follows. We are crossing out the total of $4,367,204 and we're replacing it with $5,167,204. And that is from Street Rehabilitation Fund 572, transaction code 500. And the reason why that has increased by $800 is because we've moved that money from further down in the ordinance was from the Issue 2 Fund 590, transaction code 500. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval of this ordinance. Are there any comments or questions from council members? Looks like Councilmember Cotts is.
Yes, and President Nisley, thank you. I think I did mention an email to you that I would be abstaining from this, this vote.
Good. Thank you for the reminder, as always. Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from our attendees? Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands. All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And abstentions. Okay, one abstention. Thank you very much. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2021 is an ordinance to advance funds from the general fund to the parking garage fund and amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion to approve 02021.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you, Member Reisner. This is our parking meter note renewal and due to our lack of revenue from our parking meters in the past calendar year, it is necessary to transfer money from our general fund into our parking garage fund. And this ordinance calls for $100,000 being moved between those two funds. As council is aware and a listening audience should be aware that our proprietary funds, this is not something that we do normally. We, we want the parking meters to be paid from the revenue from, that they, that they make for the city. But of course, we need to pay our bills and this is a case where we haven't had enough revenue from, for the parking fund, specifically the parking garage fund. And so we are transferring this money from the general fund. However, and I want to read this ordinance to make sure the public understands, we are committed to repaying this money into the general fund. So that's part of this ordinance. It also specifically calls out the $14,100 that is necessary to renew our notes. So section one, the auditor is hereby directed to advance funds in the amount of $100,000 from general fund 101 to parking garage fund 730. The 2021 appropriation ordinance 140-20 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance, the sum of $14,100 to parking garage fund 730, transaction code 600 for transfer to pay the upcoming parking meter note renewal and increasing total appropriations by said amount. Section four, the following inter-fund borrowing repayment schedule is hereby established, the sum of at least $5,000 per year beginning in 2022 until the balance of $100,000 has been repaid. Thank you, President Nisley.
Thank you. We have a motion and second for approval of this ordinance. Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Fall?
Thank you. I think also it should be noted that the Biden plan has passed for the American Rescue, whatever it's called, ARP. And that provided funds for local and state governments. So just to let people know that and nobody knows exactly how it's going to impact the city, but it certainly will be helpful. So, thank you.
Thanks. Councilmember Reisner?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to remind people that once we get, get through the COVID crisis and today we only had one new case in the county, parking within the, in the parking garage will begin to pick up. Consequently, revenues will begin to increase, which means that there will be finally some a positive revenue stream going into the various parking funds, which will allow us to pay off this interdepartmental loan much, much quicker rather than dragging it out for many years. So I'm optimistic that we'll be able to take care of it pretty soon.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from our attendees tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2321 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 12020, authorizing the Arts West Fiber Broadband Project Number 334 and introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. And this is, and as, as the title says, we're amending an ordinance that was passed last year that set up funding approval for the broadband project for Arts West. And this amendment is simply changing the funds from which that the money is, is being allocated. So it previously stated $120,000 from CARES Act Fund 285, TC 500. And the amendment changes it to $31,079 from CARES Act Fund and up to $88,921 from Recreation Fund Arts West for said project. But it is the same total amount. It's for bookkeeping purposes that we, we want to be sure we've designated the correct funds.
Okay. And that was a motion to approve, correct?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Okay. Second from Councilmember Claude Felcher. Any other comments or questions? Any comments or questions from our attendees tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2421 is an ordinance authorizing the design and installation of a generator to serve both the city building and the law administration building. And this is project number 336, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. Doing things in the correct order this time, I would like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2421.
Okay, and a second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. And this ordinance is something, it authorizes the Service Safety Director to advertise and accept bids where necessary and enter into contract with the lowest and best bidder for design and installation of a generator that will serve both the city building and the law administration building. And the Service Safety Director is authorized to expend up to $325,000 for this project. This is a project that has been under consideration and evaluation for several years now and is, is something that I believe is, is needed for safety and resiliency of our, our public employees.
Comments or questions? Councilmember Fall?
Thank you. I want to reemphasize the resiliency. I think that Texas shows us when you don't plan and invest for these sort of things that happens, it costs a whole lot more to repair yourself than it would have ever even cost them to put some insulation out. So the city's doing what they have to do. It sounds like it's a lot of money, but when another El Dorado comes through and we have all our, our servers saved and protected, people are going to say, wow, that was a great idea. Thank you.
Councilmember Reisner?
Yes. Has a, an approximate location been determined for where the generator will, will stand and how it's going to be housed to keep us safe and secure?
It has, and I can share that with council. I'll, I'll ask the Deputy Service Safety Director to provide, provide you that information.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? And any comments or questions from our attendees tonight? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2521 is an ordinance authorizing a contract with Washington County Commissioners and declaring an emergency, introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance 2521.
A second from Councilmember Fall.
Thank you, Member Fall. And this is to allow the Service Safety Director to enter into a new one-year contract that would run from April 1st of this year through March 31st of 2022 with the Washington County Commissioners for housing of prisoners in accordance with the contract that is attached. And this is a, an ongoing contract and just requires that city council authorize entering into the renewal of this contract each year.
Okay, thank you. Any comments or questions from council members or administration? And any comments or questions from our attendees? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The motion carries and the ordinance is approved. The next half dozen titles are ordinances that we are reading for the second time and I will read through the title. I will pause briefly to see if there are any comments or questions. To the best of my knowledge, there are no suspensions tonight, so we will just be reading the titles. Ordinance 2621 is an ordinance providing for the issuance of $290,000 of notes by the city of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of renewing notes previously issued to pay part of the costs of acquiring new parking meters and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by Councilmember Crowell. Ordinance 2721 is an ordinance amending Ordinance 2920 to increase the authorized expenditure for the Richland Avenue Pedestrian Passageway Project Number 311 and is introduced by Councilmember Cotts is. And if no comments or questions, I will read on to ordinance 2821. This is an ordinance creating the Union Street Downtown Redevelopment District in the city of Athens, declaring the improvement of certain parcels of real estate, of real property to be a public purpose and exempt from taxation, requiring the owner of the parcels to make service payments in lieu of taxes, specifying the plan for using the service payments to promote economic development and job creation, authorizing the execution of an economic development plan, establishing a fund for the deposit of such service payments. And this is introduced by all members of council. And if no comments or questions, I'll move on to the next ordinance, which is 2921. This is an ordinance amending certain sections of the Athens City Code to provide language consistency and is introduced by Councilmember Fall. And if no comments or questions, I will move on to 3021. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 3 Administrative Provisions, Sections 3.07.41, 3.07.42, and 3.07.43 of the Athens Recreation Program Advisory Committee and is introduced by Councilmember Fall. If no questions, I'll move on to 3121. This is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 3 Administrative Provisions, Section 3.07.50, Establishment of the Athens Municipal Arts Commission. And then this is introduced by Councilmember Fall. If no comments or questions, the next ordinance is 3221. And this is an ordinance amending Athens City Code Title 33 Shade Tree Commission, Section 33.01.01, Commission Membership, and is introduced by Councilmember Fall. Yes, Councilmember?
I, I believe there is a question. Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Okay. We did discuss last time that this was brought up for the first time about name changes. The administration hasn't come forward with those. However, I think that that's something that when we're reviewing ordinances and such that we can start keeping track of and then have something like title, a title that changes all the, the names in one grand bargain sort of thing. So it's not that we're not going to change names, it's that the, it needs to be kind of looked at and brought up with the, the various people. So.
Okay. So. Sounds like a good suggestion. So we're making, just as we're making code consistent, that we might take a consistent review of the titles and take a look at them. Okay. Okay. Thanks for the suggestion. We have ordinances for first reading. Ordinance 3321 is an ordinance appropriating additional funding for construction engineering services and amending ordinance 7320 to increase the authorized expenditures for the Kimes Reservoir Project Number 324 and is introduced by Councilmember Grace.
Thank you, President Nisley. So we talked about this last week in committee and this is just an, an increase in the cost for the, the project of the Kimes Reservoir Project. And it goes from 100, or 1,168,450 to 1,238,450 for the, for the project at the Kimes Reservoir. Excuse me.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from council members or staff? Administration? Councilmember Reisner?
Do we have any figures on to what would be the capacity of the, of the reservoir once the project is completed?
I don't have that. Mayor?
I don't know that there will be any increase in that reservoir's capacity, but I will certainly find out for you, Councilmember Reisner.
Thank you.
I think there's perhaps increased service capacity from building the booster station and that, that that's, it, it can serve a greater number of customers. This is my understanding of the plan.
That's accurate. That's accurate. It's the capacity to deliver, not the capacity to hold.
Well said.
Well, anything that increases efficiency on the south side, I'm all in favor of.
Any other questions for our attendees on this particular ordinance? And I'm going to, before we proceed with ordinance 3421, I did see that there was a question from Alan Swank and I missed that. I apologize, Mr. Swank. You had a question on ordinance 3021. So I'd like to take a minute while we're still reviewing ordinances if we want to go back to that for just a moment. And Mr. Swank, do you still have a question about that?
I don't see him in the attendee list anymore.
Oh, okay. I will follow up with him so that if we, something that's pertinent that needs to be shared with all the council members and my apologies for missing that in the, in the chat. Our ordinance 3421 is an ordinance amending the 2021 appropriation ordinance and is introduced by Councilmember Crowell.
Member Crowell?
You're on mute, Member Crowell.
Thank you. As discussed or mentioned by President Nisley, this is an amendment to the 2021 appropriation ordinance. And I'll go ahead and read through this. The 2021 appropriation ordinance 14020 is hereby amended by appropriating from the unappropriated balance the following sums. $580 to CDBG Fund 248, transaction code 300, to cover an increase in property taxes. And $43,000 to Water Fund Plant 740.637, transaction code 300, as follows. $13,000 to inspect three tanks and $30,000 to complete a risk and resilience assessment and increasing the total appropriations by said amounts. As discussed at committee lab- As discussed at committee last week, we've been in contact with the Ohio EPA and the water tank inspections and the risk and resilience assessment are required. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? From councilmembers, administration? Or any of our attendees? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 3521. This is an ordinance authorizing compensation of greater than 25% through the assigned pay grade for newly hired assistant director of EPW. That's our Public Works Department. And that said compensation be paid retroactively to the employee's hire date. And this is introduced by councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. As mentioned, this does require council approval for being greater than 25% through the assigned pay grade. The new assistant director for EPW, we're very happy that he has rejoined the city in this role. He does have decades of experience with the city, and I will go ahead and read section one of this ordinance. In accordance with the Non-Union Personnel Fringe Benefits Package, ordinance 142-20, Section 23B Compensation, Athens City Council does hereby authorize an increase in the hourly rate of pay for the newly hired assistant director of EPW from $29.06 to $31.71 per hour, retroactive to the employee's hire date of March 1st, 2021. Thank you, President Isley.
Okay. And do we have any comments or questions? From councilmembers? Administration? Or our attendees? Okay. If not, we'll move on to ordinance 3621. This is an ordinance authorizing the mayor and his designee to enter into a contract to participate in the Public Entities Pool of Ohio for property and liability insurance and declaring an emergency. And this is introduced by councilmember Crowell.
Thank you, President Isley. This, I will be reading most of this ordinance as well. As discussed in committee and presentation with our deputy service safety director, we believe that we can get better coverage for the city and save money to the, as mentioned, the property and liability self-insurance pool. The city administration, including the auditor, supports this change, and I'll go ahead and read this. Whereas there is a 60-day notice included in the contract should the city decide to seek other options or non-renew, otherwise said contract automatically renews annually. And whereas 120 days prior to the annual renewal, the service safety director shall report on the status of said contract to city council, be it ordained by the council of the city of Athens, Ohio. The mayor, section one, the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized to enter into a contract to participate in the Public Entities Pool, PEP, of Ohio, a joint self-insurance pool for property and liability insurance, the copy of which is attached here to, incorporated herein by reference. Section two, the mayor and/or his designee is hereby authorized to expend up to $250,021 as follows. And then the ordinance lists nine separate funds that this total amount would come from. And I'm not going to go through and read each fund. But that is the gist of this new program for the property and liability self-insurance pool. Thank you, President Isley.
Thank you. And auditor Heck, yes?
Turn myself on here. Thank you, President Isley. And member Crowell, you did an excellent job. I just want to recognize Andrew Chicky, our deputy service safety director, the amount of work involved in reviewing this, which hasn't been done. And correct me, Debbie, if I'm wrong, since 1998, we've been with our other policy and not really reviewed it. And it's just so involved. Anybody who's seen the contract, I know the law director has. The contract itself is 15 pages. We have 66 pages of lists of our property, our buildings, our vehicles and equipment, and another four pages that list every single coverage that we have and the amount we're covered by. And there are probably at least 20 new items on there. You know, times change and we have increased a lot of the amounts on there. And all of this has been done at no increased cost to the city and even slight savings to the city. And I just can't imagine how much time he had to spend to go through all of this stuff because he did and it's been pulled together. And I just really appreciate what Andrew has done for the city and to help us out. That's it.
Mayor Patterson.
Thank you, President Isley, and thank you, auditor Heck. I know that you have looked very closely at what Andrew has put out and hopefully council has as well. You know, to put a dollar amount on that savings, it's $17,992 is what we would be saving if we enter into this by April 1. The other thing is, if you recall, the deputy service safety director also in his slide deck had all the other municipalities, some of the same size as Athens, others who also were under OMJSP and switched to PEP. I called seven of those mayors or city managers or auditors. A number of them, I didn't know, I've never spoken to them before, so they didn't know me, and there was no bias there whatsoever. And I basically asked them, can you give me a sense as to your satisfaction with PEP, with the PEP program? And not one of them had anything negative to say. Most importantly, the one consistent thing that I heard from every city official when I called New Lexington, Cambridge, Schillikoffe, Belpray, Martins Ferry, Upper Sandusky, and NERC, was the responsiveness of PEP when they had a claim or they had an issue and they called that they were, and I'm not saying this because we weren't getting that with OMJSP, I'm just saying that that was the first thing they said is that their responsiveness to claims was something that was very important to them and highly acknowledged and recognized with the PEP program. And one city in particular did a five-year comparison with PEP against the previous carrier and noted right away that the savings that they experienced were, as was said to me, weren't comparable, that they were just really pleased with the program they had with PEP. So I just, I'm sharing that with council, wanting you to know after the last meeting that I did my homework over the past week to get as much information as I could for you. I know there was concern about suspending the rules, but I felt if I could get this information in an unbiased way, that it might help with us moving forward to get this through.
Okay. And councilmember Fall, you had a comment? Oh, okay. All right. Thanks for that additional information, Mayor Patterson, and thanks for taking the time. And yes, thank you from all of us to Andrew Chicky, and thanks for bringing that up. Councilmember Kotzis.
Mr. President Isley, thank you. You know, the presentation had a lot of information, and I remember, but I'm not sure if I know the answer to, there was a discussion about how with our current policy, we have relationships with legal counsel. And it sounded like we might still retain some of those or that we will get, we'll have new relationships that we'll have to forge forward, but does anybody know the answer to that question? Maybe this is more to Andrew Chicky.
All right.
I actually raised that in the meeting we originally had with PEP, and their answer was that they would look into it and see if we could maintain the relationship we have had in the past with our legal counsel who's represented us in the civil suits.
Okay. So perhaps that, and so it sounds like we don't have an answer yet, but perhaps we will be able to get that before our next reading.
Well, at least the current answer is not no.
That's true. Okay. You're an optimist. Any other comments or questions? All right. And any comments or questions from our attendees? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on to announcements and other business. Our meeting next week will be special session and then also committee meetings. So people will need to get their agenda items to Clerk of Council Debbie Walker so she can publish that in time. And, okay. And do we have, councilmember Fall?
Yeah, I just wanted to let people know and remind them that this put out their vaccination dashboard, and I went on it today, and it's for our area. They either have direct appointments that you can make if you are eligible for certain places around Athens, or they take you directly to the website of the place that is offering the vaccination. So it's called gettheshot.coronavirus ohio.gov. So. Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, councilmember Clotfelter.
I think that was a great reminder, member Fall. That was really important to use apparent, or to mention, apparently if anyone wants to make an appointment through their county's public health department, they need to go to that website now. So just to repeat it one more time, it's, they made it catchy. It's gettheshot.coronavirus ohio.gov. And we have options for pharmacies around here, but in some counties, that might be critical information. I also wanted to just mention that as these $1,400 American Rescue Plan checks start rolling into people's bank accounts and later start arriving in the mail, I really hope that anybody who's struggling will be able to use that money to avoid getting evicted or having their houses foreclosed or having the water turned off or getting more food if their food is secure. And that's just so crucial, and I think that was one of President Biden's main goals for that. But for people who will be able to choose what they want to do with that money, I would respectfully suggest that people should consider to spend some of that money to our local businesses. So many of our businesses are hanging on by their fingernails. And I think if, you know, a lot of people in Athens spend some of their money for our local businesses, it could really improve our local economy. So just my two cents.
Okay. Thank you. Any other announcements? If not, we have a few other items of business, one of which is the motion to accept the January and February credit card transactions. Someone would make a motion for their approval? Councilmember Fall? Okay. And a second? Councilmember Kotzis? All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. They've been approved because they've been reviewed, auditor Heck. That is just for you in your office. We now have the mayor's appointments to this tax incentive review council, and I think councilmember Smedley has that motion.
Thank you, President Isley. I'd like to make a motion that we approve Aaron Thomas and Brandon Thompson as community members of the Tax Incentive Review Council.
Okay. So we have a motion? A second? Second from councilmember Clotfelter.
Thank you, member Clotfelter. And just as informational purposes for the viewing audience, the Tax Incentive Review Council exists to review existing tax abatement programs in both the city and the county to recommend either continuation or discontinuation of those programs and to report also to the Ohio Development Services Agency. And both Mr. Thomas and Mr. Thompson, as many of you are aware, are both active members of our community in their leadership roles, both as business owners or leaders of organizations that they are a part of, and would highly recommend their approval on this committee. Thank you.
Okay. So we have a motion and second and a comment from auditor Heck before we vote on this? Is that true?
Doesn't have to be before. I just thought I'd explain also, member Smedley did an excellent job, but the big reason that we review, these are reviewed every year with a committee, is because for someone to get a tax abatement or another agreement, such as a TIF with the city or the county, they have to meet certain criteria. And if they aren't doing it, then it's up to this committee when they meet to say, well, we're not going to give you continue whatever tax agreement, you know, tax break that we have agreed for you to do if you're, if you don't meet the requirements. So it's not as easy as people might think to just go out there and say, you know, the city's, you know, giving me a break here. They do have things that they're supposed to do to help the city, and in particular employment, and as member Smedley mentioned, you know, these business owners are very important to the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Thanks for the additional comments. So we have the motion and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. They have been approved and thanked on behalf of the city, councilmembers and administration for the work that they'll do for this. We now have an opportunity for citizens to speak on legislative items and city services that have not been covered on the agenda. And is there anyone amongst our attendees who would want to make a comment? You would have up to three minutes to speak. Okay.
I don't see anybody at the moment.
And I'm not seeing that either. Councilmembers, we will, before we do our motion to adjourn, just a note that we do have our journalism students, so if you could log into your separate Zoom meeting. And just so everyone is aware, we are going to have a 20-minute limit on the discussion. And so as people, the students enter the Zoom meeting rooms tonight, we'll wait, we'll pause for maybe just a minute or so till everybody gets there so that when the questions start to be asked, there won't be a repeat maybe of some of the questions. So we're, these are recommendations from our government channel director, Scott Thompson, and we appreciate the feedback on that. So just before we do that, if we can go ahead then and have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved.
Moved by councilmember Crowell, seconded by councilmember Fall. All those in favor?